Hello.
I pledge allegiance.
States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have a motion on minutes for nine, one, twenty, twenty-one?
So moved.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Oh.
I forgot, we have, we have one, uh, we have.
Yeah, Jim Baker, I'm in a, a private home in Chilmark, Mass, and I'm in the room by myself.
Thank you, thank you, Phyllis. All right, so now do we have a review, or a motion on the minutes of nine, twenty?
So moved.
Second, all right. Any discussion? Great, uh, roll call vote, Jim?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Jamie?
I.
Heather?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right. Manifest documents, I think Pete has them now, nominations?
None.
Oh, great, uh, resignations, none, superintendent's report.
Great, we have a, a, a super bonus superintendent's report this evening because I've invited our four principals to come and give you an update on the opening of school. And in the interest of efficiency, I have notified Mr. Stack that he only has five minutes.
Eight, no.
And he's going to go first, so Mr. Stack, please step up to the podium.
Do I need to set my timer?
That's right.
Five minutes for three?
Five minutes, five minutes for four principals.
I feel like I am back in elementary school at this podium. This is crazy, uh, thanks for having me, everybody, I'm Brian Stack, principal at the high school, happy to be back in a new school year. I think we've had a great start to the year thus far, we're a couple of weeks in. Great couple of days at the beginning of the year with staff, lots of training to be done, getting people on board and back on board with some of the things that we're doing. Given the craziness of the last eighteen months, trying to stay focused on what we're trying to do. As a staff, our big things are really, really being able to, despite all of the different curveballs that may come our way, stay focused on teaching and learning and looking at what we're doing for kids to support them along the way, challenge them along the way. Make sure that they have supports in place when they need it, and we've got a time and a place to do that with them. It's a, it's easy for me to say that as a goal, the devil is really in the details to make that happen. Our teachers need an incredible, an incredible amount of time and resources to be able to work through those different pieces all year. And we as administrators have said that our goal is to try to keep other things off their plate so that they could stay focused on some of that important work. Uh, we had about fifteen or sixteen new staff members at the high school, we do still have a couple of positions that are not yet filled that, um, we don't have nominations for you tonight, but we're hoping to very shortly, couple counselor positions and a para position. Um, enrollment right now for us is in the ballpark of five seventy-five, so that's something worth noting. That is a lower number than I think we would have been projecting, and we do have some more digging to do to get an understanding of, because we've had a lot of ins and outs. What's some of the ramifications for that, obviously, it was a big housing market this summer, and we definitely had a lot of people moving for different reasons, people are able to relocate and work, uh, where they want to work because their job situations have changed and they don't have to be commuting as much, and that has driven some things, house prices have driven some things. The ease of being able to look at homeschool programming certainly plays in, we just don't know to what extent. So, we have some exciting things happening up, I won't take from Jocelyn's report later, so I will simply say homecoming is, is on the table, she'll talk more about that, I'm sure. Um, we have a college fair coming up next week, and this weekend's Points of Pride newsletter will be giving parents some tools and tips to look at, it'll have a list of the colleges that are coming, as well as a career planning template, college planning template that parents can be using with their kids before they come to the fair, they'll all be able to participate in that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Four minutes.
I'll see you later for the other agenda item.
Mr., Mr. Malila.
Good evening, Matt Malila, uh, principal of middle school. Yeah, we, uh, got off to a great, a great start, um, you know, obviously, I'm new to the middle school this year, was at the high school last year as assistant principal, uh, but we have a really strong staff, and, um, again, off to a great start, and as I said, to a lot of people, this kind of feels like the first time we really have the middle school together in this building, you know, last year was the COVID year, a number of students were remote all year, um, so I think considering that, considering we have, um, the entire student body together, um, and what we've done to kick the year off, it's been really positive. That was apparent Monday night, we had open house, the high school and middle school had open house the same evening, uh, late afternoon, evening, and, um, met a lot of parents. We, um, had a great turnout, actually, I was really pleased, the staff was pleased with the number of parents and families who came in and, uh, had a lot of positive feedback, and, uh, just, it was really just a lot of positive energy, um, Monday night, so that was great, and, um, you know, I'd say as we, again, as we kind of try to get back to normalcy, because we had like a pause in, um, you know, clubs, extracurriculars, athletic, well, yeah, athletics for, um, last eighteen months, you know, we are looking at getting clubs back up and running. Um, there, there's student interest, there were, you know, you know, families asking about, um, you know, clubs and if they're going to be offered again this year, things like student council, National Junior Honor Society, drama club, and the answer is yes, um, you know, we've, um, I feel like we've been here for a long time, but I, the staff barely came back three weeks ago, so, uh, but yeah, we're, we're, we're getting all those things up and running, and, um, there'll be more information coming out shortly. In terms of, um, sort of one last announcement, you know, we, we will be having a couple of parent teacher nights coming up this fall. So, um, you know, there'll be information coming out on that, I, traditionally, it's happened in November, so, but there'll be two nights offered for, for parents, for that, to, uh, have one-on-one meetings with teachers. Terms of, um, enrollment, um, our total enrollment's at two oh six, and it's fairly balanced between seventh and eighth grade, it's within a few students of, of each grade. I was asked about average class sizes, in terms of our core classes, um, math, English, social studies, uh, science, they're all about the same, they're all about somewhere between twenty point zero and twenty point three, which averages out to an average class size of twenty point one students per class. And unified arts is slightly higher at about, uh, twenty-one point three. You get some classes like PE or wellness at a little higher, around twenty-eight students, uh, per class, and some like consumer wellness where they have space limitations because of, um, you know, the kitchenettes. You may, the class is a little smaller, because you can't have more than eighteen kids in, in there with the kitchenettes, but, um, the important thing is we're off to a great start, it's fantastic to see that the kids, uh, their energy is, is great. I haven't worked in a middle school since two thousand and five, and it's awesome, I forgot how much I like little middle schoolers, so, um, you know, you may have a hard time if you ever, if I have to go back, I may not go back to the high school, you might be stuck with me at the middle school. But it's been, it's a good start, so.
Thank you, Mr. Malila. Mr. McCluskey, Memorial School, the crown jewel. It's an inside joke, I'm sorry, I didn't, you didn't even realize you're online, anyway.
No, that's okay, we can put that in the minutes.
Yeah.
Once an eagle, always an eagle.
There it is.
That's right.
There it is. This is, this, this little pep rally here from Memorial, that's good, it's a good start, um, Memorial's had a really nice start to the school year, and echoing kind of what's been said in front of us, but we entered a reorganization last year, and we entered it remotely, and that was really, really hard to build community and culture, and have to come back at the end of October, when you're already into the year, routines, habits, good or bad, have already been formed. This start has been really, really nice, um, and I'll, I'll touch base back on that, but, but I just wanted to start off with a really big positive, because the, you know, that elementary phrase or mantra, you know, the first six weeks and the importance of that at this age level, um, to be able to have that in person, it's just night and day compared to where we were twelve months ago. Memorial's enrollment right now is two fifty-eight, um, across the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, and it's a little bit lower, and just, just for what it's worth, you know, how you have those years where you have the bubble, other years you have a dip, we just have one, one of our three classes just is one of those real big dip years. Um, it's about thirty students lower than, than our other two grades, so, um, that's why we're a little bit lower, our class size range, um, between eighteen and twenty-one, for pretty much any class that you, classroom that you would walk into. Big events for this fall. One of the things that we're, you know, as we take these little steps back to kind of where we were, or the, the place that we want to get to, is we're bringing back our CARES assemblies. Um, so that really goes back to those work-study practices, it really, you know, cares, just for those who may not know, cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, self-direction, self-control, um, that was a big part of some of the social, emotional learning, and, um, just the culture that, that we tried to continue to build and encourage, you know, by recognizing those students who demonstrate those attributes throughout the school day, and, and having our staff members recognize our students, you know, in front of their peers. So tomorrow, when we have our first, will be, um, our sixth graders will be in the gymnasium with us, fourth and fifth grade will watch virtually. The next time that we have it, we'll have fifth grade live, and the other two grade levels virtual, we can socially distance, still have that live participation, and we'll invite some student performances as we recognize students as well. We have our open house tomorrow, tomorrow evening, six to seven thirty, um, we're expecting a nice turnout with that. Um, and, you know, and again, just kind of going back to the craziness of last year, we have a lot of families where parents haven't seen our school yet, you know, our kids now, we can say confidently, know our school, know where to go, but our parents, we have many parents that, you know, still go to our old entrance, or, you know, don't know where to park, so this is going to be a really nice thing as far as getting the community into the building. Our students have new Chromebooks, one-to-one, um, across the building, which is a really nice thing, that is part of the COVID Education Relief Act. I think across the district, but particularly at the elementary schools last year, we really had to kind of duct tape our way through it. Um, and in some cases, that meant families had, or students had a school-based Chromebook, and also a home-based Chromebook, just to make that, um, happen. The new Chromebooks that we have, we're asking students and families to use this model that we use at the secondary level, where they're transporting between home and school, and it gives us the flexibility, if we do need to change our teaching model for any reason, to be able to switch just like that, not have a Saturday where we have staff come in and try to have a, a Chromebook line out in the parking lot, which is about as much fun as it sounds through that description. So we're in a much better shape with that. This applies to BAKI as well, but we had, um, responsive classroom training on August thirtieth, and that's something that will be ongoing throughout the year, but that really goes back to that CARES piece as well. Um, there's a lot of that first six weeks, that norm building, those routine building, um, that social, emotional support, morning meeting, so, especially with turnover and staff, and just staff coming from the middle school now to the elementary level, just having that deeper understanding of kind of building that culture and community through the morning meeting and the responsive classroom approach has been, has been, and I think is going to be very beneficial for us. And the very last thing I'll just toss out real quick is we have new refinished blacktop, which is a wonderful thing. They painted over all of our hot scotch and our four-square and all that good stuff, so our PTO is working right now with our PE department to find some, maybe some more age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate activities to paint on there, and that's something that hopefully we will see before the fall goes too much further along, so, little bit of a facelift, so it's a good thing, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Dr. Ken. Just a quick question, which is the smaller of the classes? You said one was significantly smaller than the other?
Oh, grade level?
Sure, grade six.
Six?
Yep.
Grade six is the small one, yep.
Dr. Kennett, BAKI.
Thank you, um, so, this is my first time getting to do an update for you all. So we had a great start of the year, we actually, this will be, we have our open house coming on the twenty-seventh, well, that'll be the third time we've invited parents in. We had a social, we called it before school started, we had probably a hundred parents show up. Ms. Cefeli and I gave tours for almost two hours straight in small groups around the building. We had more, uh, students come in the twenty-seventh for an hour, for anybody who missed it on that day, meet their teachers, if they didn't, we had new staff, so we opened it up for them as well, and then we're going to be doing another one, the same design as Memorial. Uh, we're trying, Ryan and I have been working really closely to try to make sure we're doing things very similarly where we can, so that everything is just more lockstep where it needs to be, flexible where it also needs to be. We currently have an enrollment, if I separate it out, I will, for preschool versus K three. K three, we're about two hundred and eighty-four students, sorry, three hundred and eighty-four students, and we have approximately thirty-six students in preschool, counting those, you know, currently trying to come in, that's an estimation, so we're about four sixteen. Uh, we currently have class sizes, uh, kindergarten staying about sixteen, seventeen. Uh, we have class sizes after that ranging nineteen to twenty in first, twenty on the average in second, twenty to twenty-one in third, third is our bubble class with a hundred and two students. Uh, so, we're a little bit bigger than projected, but that happens, uh, things stabilized for us. And the opening few weeks, responsive classroom, as, as Ryan pointed out, is definitely what we're, we're doing, but what we're trying to do at BAKI, and I have to say, everyone is working diligently hard, is we're trying to get our systems set. So we have people from multiple buildings, and they all have great ideas. What we're doing is landing the plane on one idea, for, we have a new staff, in a way, a very new school, and we're finding themselves, and the staff have been amazing, my leadership team has been amazing, we have routines for lunch, we have routines for the morning, routines for the afternoon, parent pickup was eleven minutes today. Eighty-seven kids, eighty-seven cars, eleven minutes. Staff, and, you know, it's, it's just, how can we do it better, and that's the biggest thing, I think BAKI's working on right now, is how do we do it differently, how do we do it better? And everyone's willing to look into it, everything's on the table. Uh, I just had my first behavioral RTI meeting today, uh, with a select group of people, counselors, special educators who run programs, our responsibility room person, guidance, we all got together to start setting up a scaffold for our behavioral RTI. So what happens in the core, which I am glad to say our core is strong, we have probably twelve to fit, twelve to fourteen percent of our students not responding to core, that's it. From an RTI standpoint, twenty percent is, is a threshold, so our co, our core is solid, what teachers are doing with responsive classrooms and stuff is working. Now we're setting up what to do about tier two, what to do about tier three, uh, we're hoping to have everything done and implemented in the next three weeks. Enrolling out of plan doesn't mean it's going to be one hundred percent perfect, it means it'll be there, so then we can start putting students through the plans. Uh, we've removed some places around, giving people what they need, making sure that we have it. Lisa Barash in our librarian has been working to get the technology, and we are all, mostly all iPads except third grade, everything we need is there. Uh, she's getting all the stuff running, uh, with the new configuration, moving to Alma, our information systems have been just taking a bit longer than normal, which is okay, at our grade level, being on tech all the time is not what we want anyway. So a lot of the teachers are going back to what they did before tech, would, there's nothing wrong with that, hands-on things are great. Uh, we just had conversations regarding science, how to make sure we're getting into that, so overall, um, I think things are going really, really well, uh, we will have all of our RTI systems in place in the next three weeks, uh, being that math and DLA, and thank you again for interventionists, we actually are looking at possibly hiring our second intervention pair. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll, uh, we did it, twenty minutes, good job, everyone, thank you. Um, I, I just want to briefly say that, that for the district level, our enrollment is roughly fourteen fifty-five, which is from the time I was hired, a decrease of two hundred and twenty students. So I, I just want to remind everyone that yes, COVID has caused the enrollments at BAKI to stabilize, not increase. They're higher than what NASDAQ projected for this year, but they're not more than what they were previously, they're just kind of flatlining. So that's worth thinking about, um, I also did a lot of homework about our COVID data today. In our three towns, we have a total of seventy-five cases, this constitutes less than half of one percent, because we have sixteen thousand residents in our three towns. We have a school district total of fifteen active cases, although I do believe Mr. Stack added two active cases today, for a total of seventeen, BAKI has two cases, Memorial has five, and the high school has eight. None of these cases constitute a clu, cluster or school-wide transmission, they're individual cases, except for the four cases at the high school, and on the soccer team, the girls' soccer team. It's important to note that the four cases are complicated, because one case was identified prior to the start of school. Two of them had close home contacts, so we don't know if they got it at soccer, and one of them, we don't know where they got it from, so that was, technically, they meet the definition of a cluster, and they are masking up as a result of being a cluster. But even within a cluster, we can't tell if they definitely got it from one another, it's so complicated. So I think it's just important for everyone to know that, uh, um, we, we are very diligently watching cases, patterns for transmission, the two cases that Brian had today at the high school, um, the two students had not been in school for over a week, so there's no impact to the high school. So I just want to remind everyone in our community that fourteen point five percent of our, our households in our community have school-aged children. We could have a large outbreak in a nursing home or a care facility, our numbers on the town level could triple, and it would have zero school impact. We have to look at the data, and then the relationship of that data to the schools, not any individual, there's a lot more to this than just numbers. So that's the level of detail that we go into every single day. We look at this every day, what's happening with the numbers, and what's happening with the people associated with those numbers, so that we can make very careful decisions about steps to prevent the spread of COVID in our community. So we take it very seriously, and we are, we are fielding a lot of questions, and we're happy to help anyone who has questions, you can email me, Dr. Haynes, or your principal, we are happy to help. Um, there's a lot of confusing information out there on the internet with regard to even some inconsistencies in some of the documents between the CDC, DHHS, this, that, and the other. It makes it really hard for parents to figure out what's going on, the best thing to do is to just give us a call, because we're here for you. Um, so other than that, I, I think, uh, I will say, having spoken to Mr. Dawson at length, and he didn't do an update tonight, but he's off to a great start, we've got all kinds of cool things happening in sports, and we'll, we'll have an update from him at the next board meeting, just so that you know what's going on with sports. Thank you very much.
All right, uh, we'll move on to committee reports.
I'm just letting them go.
Okay.
You guys are good.
You guys are good.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to stay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, yeah.
You don't want to stay?
You're more than welcome to.
I'll try not to be late tomorrow, Ryan.
We almost were late this morning, as parent drop off.
Oh, oh, yeah, parent drop off.
Yeah. So we're, I was, we were almost late this morning, parent drop off, so tell them, Ryan, I'll try not to be late tomorrow. Um, we have six minutes until we have to go to our public hearing, so we'll start where we get to on our committee report. Um, so policy.
We have no new updates, our next meeting is October sixth, okay?
I will say that there's a, just so everyone knows, on the policy front, there was a significant update from the New Hampshire School Boards Association for Policies. So we are going to go from zero to sixty on policies in the next couple of meetings. Phyllis is getting everything ready, and she and I have been talking, so just get, brace yourself, because you might get a big, long email with a lot of important stuff in it, but it, it's good stuff.
Excellence in student achievement.
I have no report, our next meeting is four weeks from today, I think that's October twentieth.
Yes.
Finance.
Uh, finance, uh, I'll read through the minutes, uh, the last meeting was on August eighteenth, attendees Jim Baker remote, or Abash, uh, myself remote, Mr. Angel, minutes of six sixteen, uh, Mr. Baker motion for acceptance, seconded, roll call unanimous. Year-end numbers, uh, Mr. Angel reviewed the year-end final numbers, the DOE twenty-five report, the year-end estimate has been finalized at two point two eight two million in unexpended funds. This includes withholding the five hundred and forty-five thousand contingency that was approved by the school board in June. The previous estimate of one point eight million from the June twenty twenty-one meeting. Mr. Fitzpatrick asked if we have a reconciliation between the two, Mr. Angel believes the differences, items, like the economy, but not X, ultimately executed against, and we'll get an update on that at the next meeting. It was noted that we had an eighteen point six thousand dollar deficit in the school food fund, Mr. Baker asked for the coverage of the federal grants, as he blew the school lunches were fully refunded by federal government. Mr. Angel stated that we are getting reimbursed, but they were not a hundred percent reimbursed, the only, the only reimbursement set dollar amount in our actual spend was greater than that. Uh, business administrator comments, new accounting system running, operational since July one, transition is better than, uh, Mr. Angel expected. Per, pure pupil costs increased due primarily to the drop in the number of students in the district during the COVID period last year. Uh, Chair Fitzpatrick also pointed out the paving was completed, also the boilers have been installed, and final piping remaining hookups were about complete. Both of these expenses were included in the year-end estimate just reviewed. Mr. Angel reviewed the needs of a new truck and lease proposal that will be coming before the school board. Uh, budget adjustments, Mr. Angel requested budget transfer of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars from the salaries to other professional services. The services will be performed by outside party rather than salaried employee. Mr. Baker motion to accept, uh, seconded by Ambash, uh, roll, although, uh, approved unanimously. Trust fund balance is not available, will be available for the next meeting. Uh, other open items, roof damage at the seminary, uh, damage was repaired, Mr. Angel will follow up with further details, including insurance coverage. Update from today's meeting on that is it's not, those repairs are not complete. And I'll, I'll get to today's in a moment. Uh, stair repair needed at BAKI, metal stair lip exposed a cutting risk to students, uh, and Mr. Angel was, uh, to bring to the facilities committee, Jimmy Baker, Jim Baker asked about doing a short-term cap over the exposed metal, uh, that was reported on today, that that's been corrected, so that the metal is not exposed. Uh, foreign leaks found in the high school roof, the roof has been repaired in some of the areas, uh, we got an update on that today, also, dust collection system at the high school, Mr. Angel does not have the data available on that, he will bring it to the next facilities meeting, he actually gave us an update on that today. And the update on that is that that is operationally running, they were able to repair. Uh, student account reconciliation, Mr. Angel reported that the five hundred dollar difference was double accounting of a voided check, information was provided to the auditors. Software and subscription spreadsheet, adding the cost for each line item, Mr. Angel said that is being worked on, he would, he tried to bring it, trying it, tying it into the budget this year, uh, Chair Fitzpatrick asked for the information at the next meeting, uh, Mr. Angel reviewed that today, he's further along on that, and we'll be getting an update on that shortly. COVID spending and grant comparison spreadsheet from June is not updated, Mr. Angel, uh, after the next meeting, we talked about that today, that, that's just got to be finalized, we'll get that this week. Uh, book purchases, what was the final spending on the books, what was the cost, and what were the books that we bought, Mr. Angel to provide, he provided three sets of invoices today in the meeting. Um, and then, uh, Dr. Haynes provided another list, so I've just got to gather those together. The paving costs, uh, Chair Fitzpatrick asked for comparison of quotes on paving versus actual cost, Mr. Angel, uh, to provide that at the next meeting. Those were provided today, were five hundred dollars under the authorized amount, and the original quotes did not include the back parking, side parking lot.
A big, yeah.
Not only did we come in underneath the five hundred dollars, we finished that side parking lot at BAKI on the pavement, so that was a, a nice job. Uh, those are the minutes that I, I have, I will get the minutes out, um, later this week for the meeting that we had today, and our next meeting is on the twentieth.
Just like to add, thank you to Mr. Doyle for, um, personally hand-managing the parking paving, because I think that's how we ended up where we did with the parking, it's his hard work.
It's next week, we have a meeting next, the September twentieth is next meeting?
October twentieth.
Oh, okay.
What are you doing on that next week?
Like, wait.
Six thirty.
All right, facilities.
Oh, we got to pause for the hearing.
Oh, is it six thirty? Six twenty-nine, come on, Tom.
Hey. I got in just under the wire.
You got it just under the wire, you did a great job, all right, now it's six thirty, now we can officially hold our public hearing.
I can start it off. Ryan's gonna probably do a quick presentation, he's received a, uh, funding letter from, um, the, the trust, the seminary trustees, and they're going to be giving us, uh, thirty-six thou, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Yeah, I, you know, for those that are not familiar with the organization, they've donated a lot of funds over the last several years to the school district, they focus, well, they, they give away money in a lot of different ways, scholarships and other things, but every year they do an annual classroom grant, um, award. classroom grant, um, award for staff members. So high school staff members are invited in June to apply for classroom grants that are things that would be outside the budget. And the seminary trustees are very specific about wanting things that they know don't belong in the budget because they are more of wants and not needs, but they feel that they are things that are going to help our kids get to the next level. They look at all the proposals over the summer. They select the ones that they feel best meet some of their criteria and vision for this process. Not all of the awards that are in there or proposals get accepted. So the list you're looking at are the items that this group of about twelve came up with this year that they'd like to move forward. Um, as with every other year, when these grant proposals are accepted by the school board, the district then works with teachers to secure all of the materials that they'll need for the grant. They work with them throughout the year of the grant. In many cases, these things are things that, uh, stay in the district long after the grant is over. They get taken on in different ways. Sometimes it's equipment that now we just, we have available. Sometimes it's programming that the trustees will come back and, um, and add to year after year. For example, one of the proposals in here for lead them up, this will be the third time that they're funding this particular proposal to have this program come back and work with our kids. So I can take individual questions if you have them. Otherwise, again, the dollar amount that you're looking at tonight is thirty-six thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars in donations from the Sanborn Seminary Trustees.
All right. So motion.
Move to accept.
Second. All right. There's no further discussion?
Just quickly to point out, uh, Mr. Stack said that also every year, these guys step up to the plate and provide a good deal of money to things that we wouldn't otherwise likely pick up on. So they provide a nice outlet for people. And they're very generous, so. Just wanted to have that. Have that. Thank you.
Yep.
People aware where the money comes from? I mean, it's lots of cyber trustees, but do they know where the initial?
It's in a book that Kingston published recently. Yes, the money comes from the Sanborn Seminary School itself. When it closed in nineteen sixty-five, sixty-six, there was a sum of money left over after all of everything else was liquidated or turned over to the school district or however that worked. And the trustees have continued to operate as they did hundred years ago. It's the same group of people, but now their their job is to oversee those funds, help grow those funds so that they can continue to give to the district every year in different ways.
It's not the same people physically. It's the same organization.
But we do, but I mean, having said that, we have, no, but we have, listen, we, you know, Chuck Sanborn is a member of this committee and Chuck Sanborn's family. That's that's his great un- great uncle, great, great uncle. I've asked him before. Chuck, it comes every year for the meeting. He's very active. In fact, it's because of Chuck that several years ago, we started adding the artist in residence programs because he felt like we needed to do more than just equipment, that a big part of that vision was some of those other pieces that you get through programming and experts coming in to work with the kids. So that comes directly from him. So we still have descendants of the Sanborn family at play here. It's it's amazing. It really is.
So the money that the school district paid for the Sanborn Seminary, the seminary trustees invest that money. And based on the dividend every year, they come up with a certain amount of money that they give to the high school only.
Correct. Well, but they've they've expanded now because a lot of these programs are going to be, our seventh and eighth graders will also be utilizing and they are okay with that. And like I said, they give in other ways. They have some scholarships that they give at the end of the year. Um, they donate to other community groups. They actually donated a substantial amount of money last year and they added to that this year to the Kingston Historical Society, which if some of you will remember, took over the archives, some of the historical archives that we had here at the high school that really were part of the Sanborn seminary, and they have completely archived everything, made them digitally available, um, physically available to the community, preserve things so that Sanborn's history and this community's history and story with schooling can live forever for all to see. So it's pretty amazing, some of the things that they get involved with.
Thank you. All right. So we'll do roll call vote. Uh, Jim.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Amy.
Hi.
Maura.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Stack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Jim. Now we can go to facilities.
Okay. So the facilities, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. The facilities committee met on Wednesday, September first. The meeting was called to order at three thirty PM. Attending were Jamie Fitzpatrick, Jim Baker by remote, and administrative administrator Matt Angel. Uh, the committee reviewed and approved the minutes of August ninth meeting. Business administrator Matt Angel reported that the pumps for Baky boilers came in August thirty-first and installation is proceeding. Also, a vendor was hired to complete the install of the chimney liner. Treework at Baky, the school board approved has been completed. Repairs at Baky are needed to the concrete loading dock and concrete steps near the playground. The business administrator is hoping to have repairs made before winter, but today we heard an update that, uh, it'll probably be in the spring. At the high school portions of the exterior siding above the library need replacing. Votes for this work will be coming. Also at the high school, the concrete retaining wall needed next to the loading dock has deteriorated. The business administrator will hire a structural engineer to assess the extent of deterioration and generate possible solutions. The baseball field at Chase Field is being repaired. Wood chips at the elementary school playgrounds are being replaced. The committee discussed the need to replace a one-ton maintenance truck that no longer is able to carry anything in its dump body. As you know, at our September first meeting, the school board reviewed a presentation about the condition of the truck and reviewed a proposed lease to replace the truck with a twenty-twenty-two Ford three fifty truck. The lease was arranged at a discount under the state pricing program and the school board approved approved the lease proposal. The committee reviewed revolving fund balances as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. The balances were as follows. Special education fund, two hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Capital improvement fund, two hundred and twenty-three thousand fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Unanticipated education expense fund, a hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents. And the facilities use fund, a hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty cents. The total of the four funds is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and three dollars and sixty-three cents. The next facilities meeting is scheduled for October sixth. That's a Wednesday. And please consult the SAU seventeen dot net website for scheduling and access for location details.
Great.
Uh, our next meeting is on October sixth.
Personnel. So, uh, we were supposed to meet tonight. Uh, we ended up having to postpone. So we're going to reschedule prior to, we're going to try and reschedule prior to our next meeting, which is four weeks out. We're going to see if we can do something in a couple of weeks. Uh, we have a lot of job descriptions that Diana and Jody and other administrators have worked really hard on getting ready. So we're gonna work on that. And as soon as we have the date finalized, we will get that posted to the website. Um, SST, anything?
Uh, no, we've no, I had a meeting.
Okay. Budget.
Uh, we have not met. Our next meeting is October seventh.
Great. We have not met. Okay. All right, uh, Jocelyn.
Um, so we're doing homecoming on, uh, Friday, September twenty-fourth. Um, all week we're going to be having theme days, but on Friday, uh, we've been working really hard because, um, we lost the PTL that supported like the Saturday activities. Um, we're going to try and do the parade, the pep rally. Um, and all the like the regular activities more like winter carnival. Um, and we're going to do it all out on the football field. Um, mainly the track part, so the football field is not ruined, but we'll all be in the stands and stuff. So it's looking really good and it's turning out really well. Um, city council worked really hard on that. And then on Saturday, we're gonna have all of the sports um, going on. And then we'll have the uh, regular like food sales that usually happen every year. Um, and then we'll have the dance that night with, uh, food, a bonfire, I believe, weather print admitting and a dance outside. So I think it's looking pretty well. Um, and also the twenty-ninth of September, I think we're looking to do a second, um, soup kitchen. So that's super exciting. I'm hoping to get more outreach, um, in the Kingston area, but we got a lot, um, of good feedback from the last one. And we've gotten more people that are interested, which is nice because we're able to serve the community. Um, and sports are up and coming and soccer got back this week, so everything's looking good.
Great. All right. Thank you. And thank you for all the hard work. Please pass that along.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, can you let the student council know that we are really grateful in light of the the, uh, um, the dissolution of the the group that was supporting it from a a volunteer perspective? That we know that the teachers and the and the student council have done a lot and we really are grateful.
That's a really creative solution.
It is.
That was awesome.
Yep.
Exciting.
Yep.
All right. And there is no one here for
for kids.
So we will move on. Right. Uh, we did the public hearing already. Uh, network backup tapes.
Okay. Um, we're hoping that the school board, um, approve a um, motion to transfer or I'm sorry, expend six thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents for the purchase of a backup tape. So basically what's happening is is, um, right now, we're currently using cloud storage for backup tapes and if that were, if we're attacked or if our servers go down, it could take a couple of days to get that backup off of the, off of cloud storage and and server. So, um, this would definitely speed up the time to, um, reinstall a server. And, um, what we're going to be doing is is purchasing high-capacity tapes, um, and rotating them around and taking one off um, off of the regional site. Okay?
Is that for our video cameras?
No, this is for our computer system.
Our computer system. Thank you. I just wanted, I was.
Right. Okay. So currently, we have, um, a hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty cents facility use revolving fund as of June thirtieth. And eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars goes into that fund monthly to fund, um, facility maintenance and also technology purchases. And the school board has authority to spend the money, um, in this fund without appropriation.
Okay. So you're asking for six thousand?
I'm asking for six thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Um, I just have a question. Is this, um, supplementing the cloud storage or is it intended to replace the, what we're doing with?
It's gonna, I believe they they initially, it's going to be, um, supplementing, but I think, um, it's going to ultimately replace it.
Is there a cost to the cloud storage?
Um, actually, I do have that. It's going to take me a minute. I believe it's about five thousand, but let me. Dan, would you happen to know what it is?
These are annual costs, I assume?
Yes. The cloud storage is annual cost.
And the tapes are an annual cost as well, correct?
Yes. It's a good question.
Dan, are you asking Gordon?
I have it.
Five thousand one hundred dollars. Jim.
Jim.
Um, Matt, I know that Dell has preferred programs and discounts for for schools, or I know Microsoft does. Does Dell have that as well? Why did we pick Dell?
Um, we picked Dell because that's the equipment that we have in our server rack.
Okay. So we're limited to Dell then or for, uh, backup storage?
Um, Dell would
Without buying new equipment?
Yeah, Dell would, because we're a Dell house, Dell would be preferred because it would, we'd, um, the management of the hardware and the software related to it would be easier to manage with the IT staff that we have.
Right.
So yeah, Gordon actually said that it's through Google and it's actually free cloud storage, but we saw the data takes really long. That's why it must be put on tape. So you have that.
Thank you. All right.
You want a motion?
I think Jamie has a comment.
The sixty, sixty-five, seventy-four, nineteen. That's equipment and tape. Do you have a separation as to what you take is what's the annual cost to redo the tape?
I don't think tapes are really that expensive.
I'm sorry, they were the second part of that message. It just came to, uh, we do pay BM. They do the backups and we store it on Google. So the storage part is for BM to pay the dollar cost.
Okay, so that will go away.
So it looks on the, that's a power vault, external tape is six thousand three hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. And then the adapter is two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. If you look at the hyperlink on there, Jamie. On the
I think down the bottom. Yeah, there's a hyperlink.
Yeah. They're giving us, um, a five pack of tapes, you know, well, six packs of tapes for free for the installation. So that's going to start us off. Then next year, we're going to have to purchase some more so that we can have, um, one in history. And then, um, and then rotate out tapes so that they don't fail over time.
So the initial cost of the six thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. I know it says annually, but we're, are we buying?
We're buying little mini.
Right, the tapes, but this whole system. So is it six thousand? Is it this every single year? Or is it just the tapes every year after this initial purchase?
It's just the tapes every year after this.
Oh, yes.
Clarify.
They broke it down, so.
Jim has this lined up?
No. Jim?
Thank you. Yeah. Um, I read in the letter, Matt, that the tapes will be stored stored somewhere else off-site for, uh, for protection in case something happens. Is there a cost for the storage off-site?
Um, in my experience, typically not, because it usually ends up, I don't want to normally what you would do is you would actually drive it to a a bank vault, um, off-site. Um, there would be a storage for that. I think in this case, um, we do not have a cost related to it. Um, because I guess I know where this storage is going to go.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't want to say it publicly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't need to know where. I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to know if it was, if there was a cost associated with it.
Jim, it's going to be at your house. We just don't want anyone to know that, but it's your house.
It's going to be out of the region, so it's going to be out of the county.
Yeah.
Which, yeah, that's, that's a good idea. I'm usually home, so.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. Any further discussion?
Okay. Oh, I think she's.
I think Tammy seconded.
Whoever got there, that's her.
All right, roll call vote. Uh, Jim.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Jamie.
Hi.
Maura.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Tammy. Yes.
And myself, yes. Now we'll move on to the heating oil.
All right, this is, um, I'm not asking you, uh, for a motion on this one because, um, we only get like a twenty-four hour window to actually purchase heating oil. So I communicate with Jamie, um, whenever we do a big purchase like this. So we went out and we asked for quotes for heating oil, eighty-five thousand gallons. We asked five different companies. We actually asked six. We had a local company that we call every year. Um, and, uh, here are the the results. Irving, which is the incumbent, um, was two dollars forty-one cents and one tenth of a cent. Rhymes, um, put in no bid. Dead River was, uh, two dollars six sixty and sixty-three tenths of a cent. Uh, Dennis K. Burke was two dollars twenty-three and a half cents. And Hafners, which is Energy North, is two dollars and nineteen nine cents. Um, and and Hafners is the the least expensive, so, uh, we went with Hafners. The fiscal impact was The fiscal impact was a hundred and eighty six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars, not including taxes. This is over our budgeted projection by thirty six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And we're going to be bringing a a transfer to the finance committee to um request.
Just a question, do we pay taxes on that?
Yes, we pay federal taxes on this.
Federal, okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Um. With the local person, I'm I'm wondering if that maybe is Dennis Burke. Um, is that is that somebody from Kingston?
Uh, Dennis K Burke, actually, the the company that's local is not on this list.
Oh, okay, I I it was, I would just kind of make I. Maybe doesn't just pertain to this, but just sort of making a. Question point, I'm not sure of the value of buying local versus.
A local.
Versus not local. So I was just wondering if this was the local person from Kingston with the quote being so close. Just, I think sometimes not just a school level, state level, federal level, looking at quotes and not just going with the lowest, but going, what's the tax impact going to be if you look at it? But I I was thinking that Dennis Burke might have been that local, but.
Yeah, no, they they actually didn't um return the call for a bid.
Okay.
So I didn't want to list them out.
Yeah, okay.
But I do try to call the lar- one of the largest ones in Kingston and Newton.
Yeah.
To make sure that there are, you know, to keep the dollars local.
Uh, yes, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I was surprised it was local and that wasn't on here that I would have thought would have been.
The the problem with a local company trying to feed the the schools is our tanks are ten thousand gallons. Um, a lot of those little trucks can't supply us. They would be feeding us constantly.
Yeah.
It's it's literally like drinking from a fire hose. We get fed by a tractor trailer.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not, it's my question is really not necessarily just on the heating oil. It's just in general when we look at these bids and. I mean, I know I've personally contacted the state over state bids and why are you sending something out to Oklahoma? You can pay two percent more and buy it from a New Hampshire company. You're going to make up on your taxes, et cetera, et cetera. So um, I think just looking at a bit of who's the local guy, but. I understand that obviously a local person didn't or couldn't handle it. That's fine.
Jim?
I'm just wondering, um, it's been a while since I bought heating oil. Does anybody know what the current price of a gallon of heating oil is?
Locally?
Yeah.
Average, the state average, dollars and seventy five cents.
Two seventy five?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's, you can actually find that on the the state of New Hampshire's website, because they they list that out monthly.
Thank you. All right, uh, Tom, sharing of fingerprinting costs.
I actually that that it's Matt and I, but essentially we we received a a request from the Kingston Police Department that they do fingerprinting locally or. Um, really, it's almost solely for us, for um school employees. So that people can get their fingerprinting done at the Kingston Police Department. And so um they reached out to us to ask us to help fund the purchase of a new machine to do that work. And we didn't want to authorize giving the town of Kingston Police Department money. We felt like that was a board decision. Matt can give you the details.
Okay, so they asked for um two thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, so if you compare it to, they're they're saying that ninety percent of the usage comes from um from the school district. So um if you do the math for ninety percent of the usage is two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. So what I did is I made the recommendation of paying ninety percent of the cost. However, they'd be happy for any amount up to a hundred percent.
How much do they want?
Sorry?
Twenty seven hundred?
Twenty seven hundred, but if you were to do ninety percent, it would be two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, which is our usage.
Jim?
So Matt, this is a new machine. Um, so this would be a one time thing covering several years. Is that correct?
Yeah, they they have an existing machine. They're now being fa- forced to um do an upgrade to it. And so the.
Okay, so this is an upgrade, an upgrade to an existing machine?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's a soft software, it says.
Yes.
But. This would this, can we assume that this would be good for several years?
Oh, this would be good for many, many, many years.
Okay.
So you need a motion before a discussion, right?
Yeah.
I I'll propose, I'd propose a motion that we we offer and that we pay him ninety percent.
Second. Uh, discussion?
Um, I just have a question. Um, do we, do we, do we rec- um, refer all of our fingerprinting needs to Kingston?
Uh, the vast majority. So so if we didn't have that option, people would have to go to Concord to get fingerprinted.
I'm just one, Newton residents don't go to the Newton Police Department.
It's not the live, so Kingston has the live fingerprinting and Newton is ink and paper.
And this is for all of our employees that we hire for the district.
And the DOE, I believe, prefers the.
And school board members.
Yeah.
School board members.
They did a very one, very nice job.
Yeah.
Just want to be sensitive to the.
Yes.
The relationship.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. I was going to bring that up. Thank you.
Yeah, my only point is they they, members of the department, including the chief, have gone out of their way and donated things and found things for us and done all kinds of things for the district. Many, many times. Um, and since we're the main user of this, I I support the motion.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, take a roll call vote. Uh, Jim?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Nora?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All righty, uh, substitute pay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to recuse, recuse myself from this discussion. Um, my daughter may be a substitute during the year and I want to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Um, so we we are in a bit of a conundrum. We re- returned the substitute pay to ninety five dollars a day this spring. At the end of the school year, thinking that we would have more of a normal opening of the year. Our current substitute pay is ninety five dollars at or just above most surrounding districts, but we are still not attracting subs. We don't know if it's the fact that folks just don't. Want to come to work for ninety five dollars a day. I spoke at length with our human resources director, Diana Rooney. She is in the process of calling people on our sub list to find out why they aren't accepting the positions. But it's serious. It's a, it it's Memorial last week had a day where they didn't have five substitutes. So everyone had to try to cover for a day and it's not good for the school. So what I'm recommending, I talked to Diana this morning, recommending that we raise the pay to one ten a day. Not one thirty like last year and see if that helps us to attract substitutes because it's bad. I think you saw, we're also having problems with bus drivers. It's an aside, but it's a similar situation. Um, we had a situation this week where the bus company had to condense three routes, one route into three buses. Because they had, they're down a driver and they literally can't get anyone to cover. That must be the.
That's rain, right? We're under a thunderstorm.
You know what, you know what, Mike, I I would suggest we 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 get information with Diana. And and the reason I say that is, you know, we're going to come up with X number now, but she may come back with information that finds out that. We may have to visit the trough again, if it's in a sense, and raise it again, unless you want the stopgap between now and them, so you know.
I need.
You see where I'm coming from?
No, I I thought of that too, Pete, and I I debated whether or not to take this off the agenda tonight because she couldn't get all the calls in, but it's a crisis.
Yeah, no, no, I I get where you're coming from. I'm just saying, do we want to address it again later?
And again, this this, this is an all call to the community. If you can sub and help us, we need you. We also have. Ten or nine or ten para positions open for the intervention program. We need those filled as well, so we need help. And so I think that we did see a marked decrease. In the number of people showing up to sub at ninety five dollars versus one thirty.
I'm also curious, and I know Diana hasn't gotten everything back yet, but I'm wondering if our substitutes are afraid to come in because of the no masks.
Yeah, we can have her ask that question when she talks to them.
Because I know a lot of our substitutes are retired teachers.
Yep.
And they might not, they might not feel safe coming into a school that's not masked.
That's a valid question to ask. Yep, because we're mask recommended, not required. I heard question was, are the substitutes afraid to come in because we're we're mask recommended, not required? Is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yeah, um, the substitutes can wear a mask, so there's nothing against that. Is that correct?
That is correct, but that there, that I think the asking them the question and getting the feedback from them is.
Yeah, I I was just making a a point.
Yep, good point.
The uh, now this isn't something that's happening just at Sanborn, though. This is happening around all over, I think, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, in in addition to um. So the three really hard areas that we're facing. Uh, in New England, I won't say nationally because I haven't done that homework. Uh, substitute teachers, para professionals and bus drivers. And we're even having some difficulty filling some professional staff positions. We have a s- an assist student assistance counselor at the high school that we can't find. Um, custodians we're struggling with as well. So these are real, real problems and Diana, I asked Diana to research other things like. How much money do you make per day to work at Target or Rite Aid or other places? And honestly. It's, it's competitive, so it's a real problem.
Do you know what other schools are paying around us, Tom, for?
Roughly between ninety, yeah, we're 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 right around the average or a little bit high at ninety to ninety five dollars a day. So we're hoping that by bumping it up a little bit, it'll give us an edge that that maybe we don't have right now.
Hey, I'm kind of interested in uh what Diana has to say as well.
Yep, yep.
Jamie?
Yeah, my perspective would be, uh, you know, out to the travels that I just did, every single business of every single type has now hiring up. And when you asked them, and I did in many instances, what's going on? The answer is, and inviteably, when you pay people not to work, they take you up on it.
Yep.
And so I I I think this is going to be a problem, so I I would support having to do something because we're going to have to do something.
And and Jamie, I would say that if you ask me my opinion, I I would really appreciate the board's support in raising it to one ten. And then if Diana has further information revisiting the issue again, that's that's where I'm at today. We we need subs and if it can make a bit of difference tomorrow, I'll take it.
Yep.
Nora?
I just question if we're paying them a fair rate, though. I'm not sure that this is really the problem. And to Jamie's point, though, is going from ninety five to one ten going to make somebody decide that they're going to come to work? I'm just not sure if this is a snowball effect where we do this now, right? Didn't we have to increase ours because Timberland did? Is this like a snowball effect? I I kind of, I just sort of question that this is, okay, now everybody has to go up in this and it sounds to me like it might not be a money issue. It might be, there's just not enough people around here. Um. I'm not saying they're getting rich, but is it like a seven hour day? I don't, I just, I just did the math saying it was seven hours. I'm not sure if that's true. Thirteen fifty seven an hour. I have to imagine that's more than somebody's going to make at Rite Aid. I'm not sure if that's true, no?
I I can't give you, I don't have all the data yet from Diana on that part, but I can tell you this simply. Last year, we didn't have a problem with subs at one thirty.
Okay.
Today, we have a nightmare.
Yeah.
It is bad, I'm telling you. It's to the point where school may have to go remote or close. It, last week Memorial was so close to not being able to function that we almost had to call school off for the day. And I just can't impress upon you the seriousness that I don't, I agree with you that I don't know about the snowball. Everything you said is true. But I feel like I have to do something, right?
What did you do that day at Memorial? The day that you couldn't find five, what happens in that situation? Sort of going to remote, what did you do?
It, well, Ryan handled it and then we talked after and essentially Ryan, Jill, the guidance counselor and any teacher that wasn't teaching. Had to cover something and it's going to become a problem with the union if we continue to do that. Because you can't do that.
Yeah.
Right? Pairs get pulled. Um, it's not good. It essentially what I explained to the principal after was, you got to let me know in the morning if it's that bad because we need to make a decision about what to do.
See, I I think, I think personally, I think it's COVID, because people think, oh, school, I'm walking into a COVID incubator.
I would agree with that, but last year when we were one thirty a day, we didn't have a problem with subs. So I'm wondering if it's the mask piece. I don't know.
Need the information.
We need more information.
Absolutely.
That's why I'm saying that Diana and I talked this morning, I asked her, what do you think I should bring to the board? And she said, ask them for one ten now and we'll bring you more later. We'll talk about more later when we have more data. Mr. Stack, if you'd like to speak about this issue, I I would love to hear your, Mr. Stack is still here, I think, having a principal share.
Sure.
You know, to your point, Nora, it's good to hear right from him. Because they have to put kids in the calf with one adult if they don't have enough coverage.
I get that. I'm just, I just don't know if we're solving the problem or if we're making it worse.
Well, I, yeah, and and I will tell you, we're looking for any solution that solves the problem. No word of lie, today I met with the National Guard and I was dead serious when I said to them. Would you consider subbing? And they actually said yes.
Okay, I like.
So, but, but my point is, we're, we're going to explore any and every avenue that we can to make sure that we can keep the building open and keep it staffed. The problem that I run into is I can plan for what I can plan for. I, if I know in advance, I'm going to have a lot of people out for one reason or another. We're making calls and pounding the pavement to get people, but at five thirty in the morning, six o'clock in the morning. We're under a very tight timeline when we get calls overnight that somebody's sick, this, that, the other thing. Those are the ones that get us. And because we're the first school that opens, the 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 rest of the district isn't there to help, you know, like normally. The principals will all text each other, who's got an extra sub? Can you do this? Can you do that? Nobody can help us at our hour. We have to try to solve our own problems. Um, yeah, it's, we will, I mean, if we're in a pinch. We will put multiple classes in the cafeteria with limited subs if that's what we have to do. And it's essentially at that point, I don't want to say study hall, but the kids will be told. You have something on Google Classroom, you have to work on that. We're really here to kind of supervise that you're here. So it's just, it just depends on the day. A lot of days, we're okay, but not, not all days. And we've had a lot of our subs that have backed out this year. So our list started very long and we started talking to people. And they said, well, I'm on the list, but really I don't want to take myself off the list, but I'm not going to be a regular option for you. So we're, we're hurting. I mean, you see my Facebook posts regularly in the community looking for people that are willing to do it. And I think a lot of people, and I hope there's people listening, don't or assume you have to have credent- teaching credentials and a college degree. That is not the case. So if there are people listening in the community, you don't need that. Send us an email, give us a call, we'll walk you through the process. Ultimately, we refer them over to Tom's office and human resources and they do a great job. Talking to them about where they can fit, what they can do, what they're comfortable with, so, yeah.
Do you think that increasing the pay would help some? And be honest.
In in, I do in the sense that we compete for substitutes with the geographically bordering towns. So if we are paying more, even if it's a little bit more, it's enough that they will choose us over them. Now, does that mean that another district can't say, well, now we're going to raise ours to match? Of course they can. It could be a game of cat and mouse until we hit some kind of an equilibrium point, but that's, that's part of the market process, right? I mean, right now, it's an issue of supply and demand and we just don't have the supply, that plain and simple, you know?
But but to Nora's point, which I agree with everything she said. Yeah. Last year, when Timberland raised their rates to one thirty, we had to.
We had no choice, yeah, um, but.
And I, and I agree, and that's just where I I feel like a little bit like, oh, the right thing to do is to say to raise the rate, but I'm just not sure that that's really the long.
Right.
Term, so because we also had a conversation, I believe, in the last meeting or two that. Um, weren't the substitutes making more than the pairs and the pairs had more responsibility?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah.
That's why we went with one ten.
It it's, it it is, I it, the the fact that we're even having the conversation hurts, trust me. I I don't, I don't disagree with you because I think the problem is none of us have a crystal ball to know really.
Right.
What's going to solve the problem? All we know is that we don't have enough people to keep the building staffed. And we're here, we're really talking about substitutes for classrooms. That's just one piece of the pie. We don't have enough custodians at night. We're minimally, we're hitting the sanitary items. And then telling teachers, we may not get to sweeping your floors tonight, because there's just too much square footage and not enough people to cover it, you know? So we need substitute custodians, nurses, bus drivers, para professionals, teachers. No superintendents in principle. No superintendents and principals though, although if anyone wants to.
Although, hey, if this keeps going the way it is, Matt and I are hanging in the heat rock at the central office next weekend. I'm not kidding. I mean, we're going to do what it takes to get it.
Well, we'll do what it takes. I mean, and this is, this is true in a lot of different areas. So that's my, I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you on that. But we, I, I can assure you, we are trying to think creatively about any and all ways to solve the problem. This is just be one lever that we might be able to use. So.
I just wanted to speak to your point about like Rite Aid not paying like thirteen or whatever. Home Depot, Target, Rite Aid, their McDonald's, they're all paying anywhere from fifteen to seventeen dollars an hour. Because most of them are by the federal or the Massachusetts rate, um, not by the New Hampshire rate. So they can go work at Rite Aid for fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm. That's what we're finding.
Yeah, we're, we're struggling in our, in the, in the job that I run.
Yeah.
That we can't get direct care professionals for our group homes.
So the last thing I'll say is that the funding source for this is the, the grant money that we got from the government. So we're not taking it out of the general budget. So the Esser money can be used for this purpose.
Jim?
Yeah, um, I think Heather's point addresses something that's kind of happening across the country. And you know, minimum wages have gone up, other wages have gone up and it's still hard to find the employees. The, um, I, I just wondered, um, you instituted a substitute training, I think this year, didn't you? How many hours? What's the hour, the number of hours required to get that?
Oh, no, we, we did a training, um, last year. That was a year ago.
But doesn't that require this year as well?
It's not required in the sense that we did it to try to help orient people to the building and the-
I thought it was a good idea. I just didn't know that.
I'm not sure if Diana Rooney ran that this summer or not, but I want to remind everyone, we had a, as Brian said, we had a, a healthy sub list coming into the year. Thirty-five subs or whatever, and they're not accepting jobs.
Yeah.
That's, it's not the, the, we didn't come into this year trying to grow the pool as much as we thought we were good because we had a pretty good experience last year. And no one's signing up for the jobs this year and there isn't anything that has been said tonight that we don't agree with. We don't know. Yet.
The other thing about Heather's point though is that those are full-time jobs. And a lot of people substituting just want to work a couple of days a week.
Right.
So they're not going to necessarily get the pay of a full-time job. I got one other question for you. You said that if you don't have subs, you'd, you'd have to close a school, but. If you were short three subs, I mean, you wouldn't close a school because you can't teach three classes, would you?
Uh, well, it depends because like Brian said, he, Ri- Memorial School came very close last week to having a serious problem.
Right.
It, it, it was to the point where Matt, Patty and I almost had to go over and cover classes.
And, and there were also days last year that we were, oh, maybe we did it. We were definitely dangerously close to saying. We were going to go remote at the secondary level so that we could take all the-
All the resources.
And put them at the elementary level because we knew we were already in a situation that it was not going to be.
And, and that's more likely what would happen, Jim.
And, and, yeah. And because the thing is, is we always have the things we know about, right? Cause remember we use, we don't just use our subs to backfill. Personal days and sick days. We have long-term, right? We know we have a teacher who's going to be out for maternity leave, something like that. Well, now our subs are covering those positions and they're not available for the everyday positions. We definitely, we almost always operate in this building with not enough people. And we always, we can get away with that to a certain degree because all of our teachers have a planning period. And so it's, it's a puzzle every morning and we look at which classes need to be covered and how many people we have and we make sure that. We fill it to the best that we can, you know?
But, but it's completely different at his level than K six.
Correct.
So he can put a large group of students in the cafeteria. K six cannot do that. You have to have an adult in the classroom covering the class for every class.
Yeah, it-
It is a completely different, I've been a K two principal, there's, you have to have people in those rooms. They're little. Right? They, they aren't self-managing on any level really, probably fifth and sixth grade more so. But even fifth and sixth grade, it can get pretty wild. So, so I think to summarize, I don't want to go over this all night. I, I'm requesting that the board authorize us to go to one ten at Diana Rooney's recommendation. And we will give another report out at the next board meeting, provided that people give her feedback that's reportable. Getting subs on the phone and asking them to give you feedback is tricky and I will have her ask about Heather's point about the masking. But I also want to find out what, what, what we're essentially asking them is why aren't you accepting the jobs? Right? And we don't know the answer to that yet, but we very clearly. We did not have a problem with subs last year at one thirty and we are having a big problem right now. Heather has her hand up.
I would like to make a, increase the substitute pay to a hundred and ten dollars.
You already have a-
I don't know if they made the motion.
I was gonna say, I don't know.
I don't actually think-
We have, we didn't have a motion, did we?
No.
Oh, okay. Good.
I'm wondering if the problem is, oh, they paid me one thirty last year, now they're paying me ninety five this year. Why would I, you know?
Do we have a second on the motion? All right. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Um, I, I'm gonna vote no because I really want to hear from Diane Rooney, what, what the reason is people. Are not coming in, um, and not just throw money on the table without knowing that.
Pete?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Maura?
I'd like to see us look into the National Guard option.
Oh, no, that's a person who's going to get sub pay on their day off. It's not that the National Guard is coming to sub. I just want to make sure you understand what Brian was-
No, I didn't, I don't know what's going on in Massachusetts, but-
No, no, they're, yeah, the governor, the governor made a declaration for them to, for the National Guard in Massachusetts to drive buses.
Oh, wow.
Right? Brian just hit up the recruiter at a meeting and said, hey, would you like to sub on Fridays?
I don't know, maybe our governor needs to look into that too.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
But yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Recuse.
And myself.
Okay. And I, I will talk to Diana and have her continue. She has been making a lot of phone calls. If I can send you some information in advance, I will.
Yep. Yeah, I, I just wanted that one thing because Maura, you just put something in my mind here. We are not, please, we are not looking for the National Guard to come into our school as substitutes. I could just see somebody misinterpreting what we've been saying. And before you know it, we got newspapers calling us, is it true the National Guard's going to Sandborne?
In Massachusetts, I don't know the specifics of it.
No, what they're doing in Massachusetts is, is they are having, um, what is the group, Matt? The, the, um. The reserve, the reserve is driving buses.
Yeah.
So Governor, Governor Baker- Brian had a meeting with a military recruiter. I don't even think it was the National Guard.
Yeah.
And they were just chit chatting about school and Brian said, we're really, really short subs. Any chance you'd like to sub on your day off? Because he found out that the guy has Fridays off. And the guy said, sure, I'll sub. So he's going to sign him up as a sub on Fridays, but the military's not sending this guy to substitute at our schools. He's got to go through the process with Diana and sign up to be a sub on his time off.
Well, could we get the military to go to the substitute?
Oh, my goodness.
All right, so no old business. Uh, second public comment.
Dequintal. I'm a para professional at the Binky School. Been there for almost sixteen years. Absolutely love it. Thank you for, um, voting yes on the substitute pay. I know that some pairs are going to make a little less, but at this point we are in a crisis. And, um, today, I'm probably going to have a black eye from one of the kids, you know, but, and this is elementary school. We are, we need to get people in here. And, uh, I guess that's really all I wanted to say. And, um, as far as the subs, this is only my opinion. But I feel that yes, one, it dropped quite a bit, the pay did, you know, because of the COVID and then we went back. But also, uh, we are so short-staffed. I mean, you can't pull somebody out of the air. If they don't want to work, they don't want to work. And I think that it's very stressful and, uh, some of our subs, we're not willing to come back at that pay.
Yeah. Thank you.
All that has to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Can I make a public comment? Is it allowed?
You can make a public comment, sure.
Do I have to go up there?
Yeah, you have to go up there.
Jocelyn Lampron, New in Hampshire. Um, I just want to say personally, like I have, I have one job over the summer and then one job during the school year. Uh, the school year job doesn't pay the best. Um, I'm not going to say it's great and it's on the border of Massachusetts, half the parking lots in Massachusetts. But it's convenient. I'm able to schedule myself, but at the same time, we've been hiring, um, for two years. Um, we don't get the hiring signed down, so I don't think it's just a school thing. Um, and there's so many other locations. We have people and there's like an incentive where if someone stays for ninety days and you refer them, you get like a hundred dollars. It hasn't happened yet. No one's gotten a hundred dollars because we can't keep people. Um, so I just want to put that out there that there's, it's everywhere, like every place I go into, it's hiring. And like I say, because it's convenient, I make my schedule, but there's a ton of people that leave and I just tried to up the prices and I'm not sure how it's going to go with people staying. Um, they like up to our wage, but I don't know how it's going to work. Um, but that's a big thing everywhere. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Um, so if anyone has anything for the next meeting, please get it to Tom and I from-
A week, both, uh, Thursday, a week from Thursday.
All right, uh, and our next Sandborne Regional School Board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October sixth, twenty twenty-one at six PM at Sandborne Regional High School. Mr. Proctor?
Yes, I make a motion for you with a non-public according to R S A ninety-one dash A colon three two, sections K and C.
Two minute bathroom break, please.
We need, we need-
Second, second.
I really needed to go.
All right, uh, roll call vote, Jim?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Jamie?
Hi.
Hi.
Heather?
Yes.
Sammy?
Yes.
And myself, yes.